Spring is popping out all over and it's time for spring cleaning. Be sure you don't forget your duck work. Call Premier Heating and Air today and clear the dust, Premier Ducks and keep your unit running smoothly. Through the end of April, receive a free indoor air treatment system with the price of a whole home duck cleaning. And with temperatures heating up, make sure you keep your cool with a $49 AC checkup special. Need a new unit? Get up to $2,000 off qualifying systems. Schedule a visit and get a quote today at premierishere.com. The choice is clear. Choose Premier. Premier Heating and Air, a locally owned and operated company. Offer ends April 30th.
Welcome to our TV 35 Dublin Lawrence County Chamber 2024 Political Forum. Again, want to say thank you to TV 35 and our Dublin Lawrence County Chamber of Commerce. Our next race tonight will be for the District Three County Commissioner Office. And we have Mr. Jeffrey Davis with us and Mr. Jared Mathis. Mr. Davis, as our elected official, our current serving commissioner, we're going to start with you. You have two minutes for your opening statement.
Thank you Heath. Thank everybody for coming out. Thank you TV 35 and James and Ron Deal. Thank you, Mr. Mathis, for offering yourself for a public service. Everybody ought to do it at least once. My dear friends in the room and watching at home. And I'd like to thank my mother and my late father. That's who instilled a spirit of community service in me. My father did a lot for the community. My mother worked for 35 years at DFACS and for community mental health. And I always saw her helping people that didn't get a lot of help. And that stuck with me. So, thank you mom, I appreciate it. Most importantly, I want to thank my beautiful wife Jennifer for all that you do. We're coming up on 20 years. Wouldn't have anything or be anything without you. Thank you for our children. At the end of the day, everything that I do and have done is for you and them. And y'all hadn't left me yet, so maybe I'm doing alright. So, my name is Jeff Davis. Excuse me. I have faithfully performed the duties of this office for seven years. In that time, Lawrence County has experienced its greatest period of prosperity in living memory. My business approach to budget decisions has contributed to world-class emergency services, upgraded infrastructure and equipment, and increased quality of life. We have rolled back the mileage rate every year I've served on this board and never raised ad valorem taxes. Our mileage rate is half the amount of the average mileage rate of surrounding counties. They literally pay double taxes for lesser services. I will continue to vigorously defend the taxpayer, insist on high value for each dollar spent, and keep property taxes low. I ask high-performing employees in my business only one thing. What do you need from me? I'm your high-performing employee and I need your vote. I'm respectfully asking for your vote so we can keep Lawrence County prosperous. And please stick with a proven, experienced conservative leader and vote for Jeff Davis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Mathis?
Yes, sir. Well, my name is Jared Mathis and I've as well grown up in Lawrence County my entire life. Always lived on Mathis Road up toward Dudley. And as a young child, I used to help people farm. I say young, below, before my teenage years, helped Russell Dupree and Scott and I and all those guys up that way farm. And then into my teenage years, I actually grew up working at Graham Brothers Construction. And my granddad was Wendell Mathis. A lot of people know him, his wife Lois, they're both gone now. But I spent all my summers and after school working at Graham Construction, really most of my life up until I went to college at Georgia College and State University in Milledgeville. And my time in Milledgeville, I got a job working at Choo Choo Supply there at the time because I had a CDL driver's license that I obtained while working at Graham Brothers. So, I worked on a lumberyard through college paying to get through my four-year degree in criminal justice. After graduating college, I actually stayed in Milledgeville for a few years and worked and I still lived in Dublin but drove back and forth working at Choo Choo up there. They offered me a full-time job and I've been there ever since, rolling up on 20 years this fall. So, I'm not one of the kind of guys that switch jobs all the time. I've been in the same company since I graduated college. But I always like to tell everybody, I got a bachelor's degree from Georgia College and State University, but the best degree I ever got was the hard work from working on the farm and working at Graham Brothers Construction. I got a doctorate degree from working with those guys. In addition to all of that, I've been a firefighter here in Lawrence County for 22 years. I'm also a commercial pilot. I fly King Airs, Behrens, and Bonanzas. And I utilize our county airport a lot. Again, I already told you, I got a degree in criminal justice, so I know a lot about law enforcement and practices of law enforcement and crime. Even though I didn't end up going in a career in those lines, I still have a broad knowledge of what the police need or what the sheriff's department needs to be able to succeed in the job that they do. Alright? I've been, I know every commissioner wants to come up here and say, we want to do public safety is my thing. I watched a debate from four years ago and Jeff Davis opened with the exact same speech that he just gave you tonight. Alright? He said, we're gonna, we got the best public safety, we're gonna boost public safety. Well, in four years, I'm going to tell you, they didn't do a whole lot until just recently. Alright? I will tell you that Lawrence County has not made a major purchase of fire trucks since 2007 when they passed the original Splot tanks, alright? Hasn't been any more, there's been a few trucks bought here, there, and yonder, but no major purchase. All of our fire trucks in Lawrence County are between 20 and 30 years old. And there's not a replacement schedule out there to replace these trucks in the municipalities and move them out into the smaller county departments. We had a rule of fire executive board that used to advise the commissioners on decisions such and that.
Are you still doing your opening statement?
We're rolling into everything. I want to get it all out, but...
Let me stop you for just a second there so we can be fair and respectful on our time for both candidates. But I've got some questions, I think, that'll give you the opportunity to address this.
Well, again, let me thank you for being here tonight and I do thank the audience for being here. And I think you can see the direction the debate's going to go on my side tonight. And we'll get started with the questions.
I've always sort of had my rudder pointed at public service. I was very grateful that I had the opportunity and was given the opportunity by our governor, Governor Kemp, to serve in this position. And as I said before, I feel like I'm providing valuable public service to the community. And I feel like I'm serving well. I would say that my private practice, which was based here in Dublin and took me to Superior Courts throughout the Dublin Judicial Circuit, some outside the Dublin Judicial Circuit. But being in private practice exposes you to not just criminal cases, not just civil cases, but a good mix of both. I'm confident to say that I've handled pretty much every type of case that comes before a Superior Court judge. And so, that's allowed me, as I said before, to hit the ground running and to really not skip a beat in my transition from being an advocate and a lawyer to sitting on the bench and making decisions on behalf of the people of the Dublin Judicial Circuit. I will also add that I was previously municipal court judge for the city of East Dublin. I did that for about a year and a half. And I have previously served as an administrative hearing officer for the Department of Community Health for the state of Georgia. And so, I do have prior judicial experience. And I have made decisions. I have analyzed the law and applied it to the facts of the cases that have come before me in the past. So, I feel like I have the experience it takes to effectively get this job done. I believe that I have demonstrated that I can capably and competently handle this job. And I believe that I deserve to be elected a full term as a Superior Court Judge.
Hey, I'm Glenn Redstone with Hometown Supply. Anything they need for us to do, we do. We give warranty with everything. You and you. You can get what we call a tractor style mower that's less expensive than a zero turn is. You can spend basically half the money and do the same job. Come down and look at what we have, service it, we get parts for it. We can take it down there behind the store. We got a place down there where we cut, show them everything about it. Take it out, set it up, do the financing on it, payment where you handle it. You can get whatever you want and just about name your game. This is a one-stop shop.
And remember, if you can't do business here, you just can't do business.
Jared is one of the most loyal and dependable people I know.
Jared was always first and foremost to volunteer, to be assistance or do anything that he could when our youth group would go off.
He's the kind of guy that it doesn't really matter where you're at, he's got a way and a means to get to you.
He's hardworking.
He is a man beyond reproach.
Having someone in the political realm that you can trust and depend on and knowing what I know personally about Jared, that's the sort of elected official I want representing me and taking care of my community.
Elect Jared Mathis your next commissioner. He will be the person that you need, a person that you can trust.
On behalf of our family, our very active family, we ask that you take your family to the polls, May 21st, to vote. Jared Mathis, District Three, Lawrence County Commissioner.
Since 1916, Gravely has been designed, engineered, and made right here in the USA. Whether you prefer gas or electric, every Gravely has been forged with the commercial landscaper in there. So, they're not only built to last, but to also keep you riding comfortably from dawn to dusk. So, ask yourself, are you ready to graduate to a Gravely? Visit your local Gravely dealer today.
Hey, I'm TJ with Dublin Outdoors and Powersports, formerly known as Magic Equipment Supply. We're your full-line dealer for Gravely lawnmower sales and service.
Spring has sprung and inventory is popping up everywhere at Dublin Chevy GMC. Whether it's a Canyon or an HD Silverado, we have what you're looking for. With rates as low as 2.9 for 72 months, come pick your Silverado or Sierra. Or if you're looking for a full-size SUV, we have a great selection of Yukons and Tahos. Remember to visit mydublinchevrolet.com for all your sales or service needs. Remember, Don sells cars and trucks well only at Dublin Chevy GMC.
I'm Carlos Jones and to me, experience matters. And I believe Brad is the man for the job. I met Brad years ago when I started in juvenile probation. He actually trained me and taught me a lot. I watched him how we worked with the young kids and how it didn't matter who it was he was working with, he was always loving and fair to them. And he would fight for kids in the courtroom. And so, I just really believe he's the man for the job, even after me leaving the Department of Juvenile Justice behind him, going into the education field. There's been times I had to call on him just for some advice with things. And he was always open to giving me that advice. So, I truly strongly support Brad Childers.
Hi, I'm Meg Greer-Evans with Middle Georgia Estate Planning. If you need help with any type of estate planning, whether that's a will, a trust, financial power of attorney, or a healthcare directive, give us a call. We'd be glad to assist you or consult with you and your loved one about long-term care. Our phone number is 478-272-2885. Or you can visit our website at middlegeorgiestateplanning.com.
Hello, my name's Mike Robertson. I've decided after prayer and talking to folks, I'm going to try to run for county commissioner, give it a try. Some of the things I'm interested in is getting back to helping folks. Let's get back into people helping business. I've seen that dwindle down over 40 years. I just retired three years ago with 36 years with the county. So, I know about the bills, I know what comes in and where we can help that. And there's just a lot can be done. I will promise this, everybody in District Two, if you need me, I'm right here. I'll be there. I will be a good steward of the taxpayers' money. We will tighten up and we'll know where everything's going. And any big projects that come along, I want the public involved in it. I'm back in the Sheriff Department EMS, back in 100%. Believe in public safety. We got to get these roads safe again for everybody. With these new businesses coming into Lawrence County, we've got to work on our infrastructure. We got to get these roads back right again and we got to keep them right. I would appreciate if everybody would go out and vote for me as county commissioner and I'll try not to leave anyone down.
Hello, my name's Jeff Davis and I'm asking you to reelect me as your county commissioner for District Three. In my time on the Board of Commissioners, I've been the taxpayers' watchdog. As a result, property taxes are one-half of surrounding counties and we have a healthy surplus. Public safety, infrastructure and equipment, economic development, and quality of life have been and will always be my top priorities. Please vote for me, Jeff Davis, for county commissioner, District Three. Thank you and God bless.
Okay, the first question, I'm going to start with you and it may be leading into what you were getting to. But what do you feel is the biggest challenge facing District Three? And how will you address that challenge?
Well, obviously, I was sort of midstream in it and I don't want to get up here and sound like a broken record tonight, but even Trey hit on it earlier. Is our public safety, our ambulances, our fire department? And I do want to thank the commissioners for passing the stopping that they just finally passed for the volunteer firefighters. But I would also like to point out that it was only finally voted and passed after I announced that I was running for commissioner. And that's verifiable by the Courier-Herald. You can look at any of the articles out there and see that those dates and they're going to tell you, yeah, we was talking about it for a long time. And we have been talking about it for a long time. But nobody could decide to act. They were supposed to get those checks before Christmas in 2023 and they just now got their checks and what were in April, they would cut it into March, March slash April of '24. So, I think they're running behind. Four years ago, he was going to bolster public safety, alright? But yet, he pulled all the ambulances out of the county and back to the city. That was a decision by the commission board, okay? So, as Trey told you earlier, there's no Lawrence County ambulances in the county. They're all at city stations, okay? And believe me, I know the city's got a lot of people and a lot of calls, okay? But we do need ambulances out in the county as well. And to the city of Dublin residents that are voting on this county commission seat, I told somebody the other day, I was running for Lawrence County City Council because there's a lot more city voters in this district than there are county voters. And it's very important that the residents in the city have access to ambulances and those services. And I think they've got them. And we've got one of the best ambulance services that I think in the country. I know so in the state, they get awards every year.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, I'll give you a couple of minutes and you can respond and answer that. What do you feel is the biggest challenge facing your district and how would you address that?
District Three specifically, a challenge is interesting in that the city limits of Dublin are expanding further and further out. A lot of times, they're annexing just the roadway, like Country Club Road probably from about Parker Dairy Road out to the Country Club itself. Just the roadway and the right-of-way is in the city and then the Country Club's in the city. So, their infrastructure is being extended. It causes some confusion between is this parcel in the city or the county with who responds, who should get dispatched first. That's an issue. I do think in District Three, you have a great deal of population that is adjacent or sometimes almost completely surrounded by the city of Dublin that's not in the city. There are private neighborhoods, not private neighborhoods, but neighborhoods in the unincorporated county that are not in the city of Dudley, the city of Dublin, or any city with private water systems that are, some are failing. Some of our smaller cities, their sewer and water utility systems are getting some age on them. So, there has to be a lot of coordination between all our municipalities and the city of Dublin, East Dublin, on utilities, getting more water, more sewer further out into the county. Because most of our growth the last 10, 20 years has been in the county. So, that would be, I think, the biggest concern specific to District Three.
Okay. I'll start with you with our next question. If reelected, what's the thing at the top of your to-do list?
It's always been at the top of my to-do list. When Buddy Adams asked me to run for commissioner, county commissioner, the first thing I asked him was what does it even, what does a commissioner do? Growing up in Dublin, most of my life, most of my services were provided by the city of Dublin. However, I realized pretty soon doing this job, and Commissioner Kemp alluded to it earlier, the most important thing we do as commissioners is what happens when we call 911, when someone calls 911. That call, the person that answers that call, the dispatch and everything that happens after it is completely on our shoulders. That is, the fire department, the sheriff's office, the EMS, we have to get that right. We do get that right. The record shows we have put millions and millions and millions of dollars. Our greatest expense, capital expense, has been public safety every year that I've been on this board. To say that there's been nothing spent in the fire department is simply wrong. We just got a grant and matched it for a million dollars for all-new turnout gear for every firefighter in this county. Spending money, we built a new firehouse in the city of Dudley about three or four years ago. Maybe you're familiar with it. So, I asked Josh McCard, you know, our fire chief, he's a great dedicated employee, you know, what do you need? Our next expenditure on a truck needs to be at the Valenbroja area, according to the county fire chief. So, that's what we're prioritizing. And then the next big firehouse renovation needs to be in Dexter. So, we're gearing up to do that. You know, something else that we're always doing with public safety is our radio systems and Motorola system. We're needing to get about eight to 10 more years out of it before it's completely replaced. So, last summer, we replaced all the repeaters. That was quite a bit of money. This summer, we're going to be climbing towers, changing out all the dishes and all the antennas. So, things are always being done. But public safety, as far as capital, has always been the biggest expense of this board and will continue to be that way. As Mr. Kemp said, all five commissioners currently serving, that's our highest priority.
For you, Mr. Mathis, if elected, what would be at the top of your to-do list?
Well, as always, the top of any to-do list is to make sure that the sheriff's department has the tools that they need to combat the crime that I think we're going to eventually see spill over into District Three. Right now, I know there's a lot of crime lately been going on in Dublin and it's mainly concentrated downtown. But I'm afraid that that crime is going to continue to move out. It's going to move out into other parts of the county. It's going to move out towards Dudley. It's going to move out into people's houses in Dublin that live in District Three. And we need to make sure that we've got all these agencies working together to help combat this crime and help find these people that are responsible for it. I know just recently, I think the ones from the last big shooting are in custody. But we have a lot of unsolved crimes that have occurred and probably in Dublin. And we've had, you know, I don't want to get in here and really talk about it in here tonight, but we've had a lot of things spill out into Dudley that the general public probably don't even know about, you know? And it spilled into other areas of District Three. So, I think we need to make sure we got our law enforcement agencies working together, make sure they've got the tools that they need. And Jeff, I do appreciate the fire station up in Dudley. I am familiar with it, by the way. And it is something that we needed for a long time. It was the original city fire station up there and it had been years in the works. And I will say that had we not worked very closely with the Dudley City Council and the commissioners, we probably would not have gotten our new fire station up in Dudley. And one thing you'll learn about me is I tend to work well with everybody. I'm the kind of guy that can come into a situation and get everybody on the same page and work for common good to achieve a common purpose, okay? And I don't want to bash the board or say that we haven't got anything. Obviously, money's in the public safety all the time or there won't be any public safety out there. But sometimes I feel like the money may not be spent in the best areas and we may not be getting the best thing for the buck. And I also want the voters to know that if I'm elected, I'm not a blank check for public safety, okay? I want to say that again. I'm not a blank check for public safety. I understand the differences between needs and wants, okay? The sheriff might want 100 Escalades, but we might can only get him 100 Crown Vics or we have Dodge Chargers now, okay? We might want a ladder truck, but we might not need a ladder truck. So, I understand the difference. And I don't want the voters to think that just because I'm elected, I'm going to be a pushover for somebody always wanting money and assets. And one thing I would like to note, you know, the coroner needed one vehicle. And my constituent up here that I'm running against voted against it. One of the other commissioners ended up coming back and changing and changing his vote so that he could get it. But I don't understand why we were squabbling over one vehicle. I appreciate the sheriff's department for stepping up and having, making sure those guys have something to ride in.
I'm going to stop. I think you may have kind of answered. I gave you a little extra time there. So, I'm going to let Mr. Davis go ahead and talk about budget. Because you were talking about maybe where money needed to be spent more or less. And Mr. Davis, would you address that? Where do you feel more spending should be in the budget or where should spending be reduced in the budget?
Thank you Heath. So, where more money needs to be spent in the budget is always payroll. The best thing that we have in Lawrence County is our people and our employees. We have the most dedicated, hard-working, take pride in what they do employees. I've been astounded to see the product that they put out day after day, week after week, year after year. They take pride in what they do, every single one of them. Inflation, as you know, is, everybody knows, we feel it at the grocery store. Inflation's going up every year. Used to be years when it was 2 and 3%, that was normal, and now it's 8 to 10. We have constantly, every year, tried to give a raise that matches inflation. If you don't get that, you're going behind. That is always our first priority as a board when we do budget is what is inflation and what do our people need just to stay where they are? If everything else has gone up 8% and 8% raise is not really a raise, it's just keeping you where you are. And then, we've been blessed to be able to do on top of that as well most years. There have been times we've had to tell certain departments, you know, we can't give you everything you're asking for, but give us another year, we'll give you part now and part next year. With 250 employees and 24 departments, it's a big aircraft carrier to steer, but we get it right. So, that'll always be the more. The less, what needs to be reduced is everything. We make every expense justify itself, whether we have a surplus of $2 million or $20 million or $200 million. I've got, I founded a business here 20 years ago that's been very successful in the principles I was taught, I've brought here. I have a degree from the University of Georgia in economics. And so, I apply all that to the decisions we make. And if we have a $200 million surplus, I will not spend $20 that's not needed. That's how you get surpluses. You're going to need them when the economy turns and when things get tough again. There's never a good time to make any expenditure of any amount that's not needed. So, the reduction is everything. Every dollar we spend has to fight for itself and really prove that it needs to be spent.
Hello, I'm Jared Mathis, candidate for Lawrence County District Three Commissioner. We're out here at the WH Bud Behring Airport, which is a welcome mat to all business in the Dublin. It's vital that the county commissioners keep the airport in a presentable and working order at all times as we never know who may come in and out. And this is the first impression that they get when they're coming to do business in Dublin and Lawrence County. Also, other items on my agenda is to keep improving public safety. We have great public safety departments and I want to make them even better. Our first responders are second to none and Lawrence County is revered among all surrounding counties as having one of the best group of firefighters, the best sheriff's department, and the best EMS department, one of the best of those in the state. And we must keep continuing to improve those type services. One thing I would love to do, our ambulances right now are all currently located in the city and I want to keep those ambulances right there in the city. The city residents have a lot of calls and they need those ambulances, but our ambulances are stretched thin. So, we need to add additional ambulances and additional personnel. And we need to place strategically some of those units out in the county. I'll work as a county commissioner to secure the funding and make sure we have the pay-in in line with other surrounding agencies to be sure we can make that happen. So, perhaps we can get an ambulance to your community. My goal as a Lawrence County Commissioner is not only to just look after District Three, but I want to look after the county as a whole. Because if the county as a whole is successful, District Three will also be successful. I also have plans to get with local developers. Let's see what we can do to bring in more residential construction to Lawrence County. I have been in the construction industry for over 20 years, same as the amount of time I've been in the fire department. And I can tell you, residential construction drives business. It creates jobs, it gives subs jobs.
drives business. It creates jobs. It gives subs jobs. It creates people in your restaurants. It brings people in from out of town. People spend money. Construction makes an economy, especially a local economy, thrive. We need to get more residential construction in Dublin and Lawrence County so we can help our residents achieve the American dream of home ownership. Please go to the polls on Tuesday, May 21st, and cast your ballot for Jared Mathis, District three, county commissioner. I will certainly appreciate your vote. Thank you.
I've always sort of had my rudder pointed at public service. I was very grateful that I had the opportunity and was given the opportunity by our governor, Governor Kemp, to serve in this position. And as I said before, I feel like I'm providing valuable public service to the community, and I feel like I'm serving well. I would say that my private practice, which was based here in Dublin and took me to Superior Courts throughout the Dublin Judicial Circuit, some outside the Dublin Judicial Circuit, but being in private practice exposes you to not just criminal cases, not just civil cases, but a good mix of both. I'm confident to say that I've handled pretty much every type of case that comes before a Superior Court judge, and so that's allowed me, as I said before, to hit the ground running and to really not skip a beat in my transition from being an advocate and a lawyer to sitting on the bench and making decisions on behalf of the people of the Dublin Judicial Circuit. I will also add that I was previously municipal court judge for the city of East Dublin. I did that for about a year and a half, and I have previously served as an administrative hearing officer for the Department of Community Health for the state of Georgia. And so I do have prior judicial experience, and I have made decisions. I have analyzed the law and applied it to the facts of the cases that have come before me in the past. So I feel like I have the experience it takes to effectively get this job done. I believe that I have demonstrated that I can capably and competently handle this job, and I believe that I deserve to be elected full term as a Superior Court judge.
Spring is in the area. Roach Farm and Garden. Flower beds and garden looking kind of sketchy? Lit a soil test. Need new plants? Roach Farm and Garden just got a huge shipment of ferns and tropicals. Looking for Mother's Day gifts? Roach Farm and Garden has you covered. Garden accessories, flags, wind chimes, and more. Time to get those salt licks out for the deer? Roach Farm and Garden carries trophy rocks and 50-pound mineral blocks. Don't forget, Roach Farm and Garden has a full line of deer feed. Looking for some shade? Roach Farm and Garden has you covered. Pecan trees, fruit trees, and ornamentals. And while you're picking up your tree, check out our huge selection of concrete statues. In the need for seed? Roach Farm and Garden carries everything you need for your garden or farm. And as always, Roach Farm and Garden carries feed for just about everything. Have a happy Mother's Day from all of us at Roach Farm and Garden. Two locations, Dublin and Wrightville.
Hi, I'm Tom Dominy. Here at Dublin with Nelson, we pride ourselves on providing the industry's highest quality products at the most competitive pricing. We are a full-service wholesaler specializing in plumbing, irrigation, and industrial products. With a staff that collectively offers more than 50 years of expertise, our team knows your industry, and we can answer your questions and help you get the parts and equipment you need. From mowing to reni, we carry the plumbing, irrigation, and industrial products you need from the brands you trust. We also carry a great lineup of Milwaukee tools. At Dublin with Nelson, our goal is the long-term success of your business. We achieve that goal with a simple commitment, doing things right, one customer at a time. If you have a question, or if you're looking for a hard-to-find part, give us a call. Our experts are ready to help. Order online, give us a call. We'll come by at 507 Airport Road in Dublin. We're committed to building long-term relationships with our customers by earning your business every day.
I graduated from West Lawrence High School in 1994, and my first love was agriculture. I was not focused on college and never thought about law school. I was focused on farming and driving tractors and being outside, watching crops grow at harvest time. That's where my love was at. I did that for about four or five years after high school, and I knew that I always wanted to have something to do with agriculture, but I needed to get a degree. So I went back to school and to college, and I got a four-year degree. I took a job as a probation officer. Now, during that four- or five-year time, I got my CDLs and drove a truck. In fact, I'm probably the only attorney around here that has CDLs and still drives occasionally. But I took that job as a probation officer, and I did that for about a year, and I decided I wanted to go to law school. I did not fit the cookie-cut mold of what a law school student should be or they think should be. I was not a traditional student. I was a non-traditional student, because I was married at the time, and I had worked in the workforce. So I went to law school at night, driving three days a week from Lawrence County to Atlanta at night for three and a half years. That's how I got my law degree. I was not born with common knowledge, and none of us are. We are not born knowing that fire is hot and ice is cold. We're either taught that or we observe that. Knowledge is gained through events and experience. I told you that my slogan was experience matters, but that does not just go for legal experiences. It goes for real-life experience. I have real-life experience. Our court system needs a judge to bring to the bench real-life experience, a judge that can relate to the common working man or woman, a judge who understands that not every job is nine to five, and not everybody just works 40 hours a week, a judge who recognizes that people do live paycheck to paycheck, a judge that will look at all the circumstances and all the facts and consider all of that in the ruling. If you feel the way I feel, I'm asking for your vote for Superior Court Judge of the Dublin Judicial Circuit. Please vote Bradford Childers for judge.
Hello. My name's Jeff Davis, and I'm asking you to reelect me as your county commissioner for District three. In my time on the Board of Commissioners, I've been the taxpayer's watchdog. As a result, property taxes are one-half of surrounding counties, and we have a healthy surplus. Public safety, infrastructure and equipment, economic development, and quality of life have been and will always be my top priorities. Please vote for me, Jeff Davis, for county commissioner, District three. Thank you, and God bless.
Our question, our next question, and I'll start with you on this one, Mr. Davis. Talk to me about the most pressing infrastructure needs and/or capital projects.
Infrastructure, the most pressing infrastructure needs and capital projects? Well, again, we're blessed. I'll start with infrastructure. Let me back up. The infrastructure is roads. We're always doing roads, as Commissioner Kemp said. I have less than a mile of dirt roads in District three. Commissioner Chain has very few. She and I, but the other commissioners have, you know, almost 101 instances and then hundreds in the other two instances. Mr. Kemp's district is almost 400 square miles. They're counties. Most counties aren't that size. So the voters, over and over, have told us, keep our property taxes low. We will pass every sales tax that's put in front of us. We have an 8% sales tax rate in Lawrence County. The first four always go to the state, the first four pennies. The other four are lost, the local option sales tax, SPOLOs, special purpose local option sales tax, E-SPOLOs, which is for the schools and education. We don't, you know, see any of that money. And then the T-SPOLOs, transportation SPOLOs. So that's what built the bridge over the Oconee River, which was desperately needed. So that's infrastructure needs. And then what was the other?
Capital projects.
Capital projects. Again, most of our SPOLOs dollars, lost, SPOLOs, and, well, lost and SPOLOs, those are two pots. The vast majority is in public safety. We are building a new 911 center with all-new electronics and systems, and that will be online hopefully in November. That was $3.8 million that SPOLOs paid for. So we're constantly, you know, firehouses, EMS stations, and ambulances, a half million dollars, one ambulance. Fire trucks are exorbitant. They're expensive, but we are blessed that, but we're always, we always have a list. There is a replacement schedule in every department. This is the next thing that needs to be replaced, the next thing, the next thing, the next thing. And that's just, we work down that list.
Mr. Mathis, talk to me about how your needs, or you feel what are needs for infrastructure and capital projects.
Well, infrastructure and capital projects, I'm going to start with a facility that is owned by the county that I use on a daily basis, and that's the Dublin WH Budbarren Airport. All right, a lot of people in the county don't know how important that the airport is, but it drives all kind of business, all right? When this guy comes in to put this seatbelt factor or whatever he's putting in at the bypass in 257, I guarantee you, they showed up on jets, all right? I was there when they rolled in, and by the day was over, there was four or five jets sitting out in Dublin for the first time in a long time. We have to make that airport be the welcome mat to those industries, okay? When those guys come in, that's the first impression they get of Lawrence County. That's what they see when they hit the ground coming in out there, all right? I know that, I think just recently, maybe they've put out the bid, a new airport lighting system, but our lighting system has been working intermittently since the last major hurricane, which was like three to five years ago. I can't remember the exact date, but it's been an issue, okay? We've also got to watch out for airport encroachment, all right? And by that, I mean, we can't let just anybody and everything go build something out at the airport. And shame on me, but I, you know, I didn't know that it was going on, but just recently, a cell tower was approved, and it got put up in the traffic pattern for runway 20. And because of that, the FAA raised our approach minimums 100 feet on that end. And that's very important if it's a cloudy day or inclement weather for somebody to be able to get in and out. That might mean the difference to them getting, not being able to get in and land. And you might say, well, that's a business. They could come back. Well, there's a lot of organ donor flights come in and out of Dublin almost on a daily basis. Air Evac is in and out of Dublin now flying in instrument flight rules. That's very, very important to keep everything out there working right and making sure that we don't let anything encroach on it. I know at one time, there's some apartments being talked about being built close to it. What happens is everybody's fine with it right now, but then, once it gets built up, everybody starts complaining about your airport if you're not careful. So you got to watch that kind of stuff. I tell you, I want to go another level with that, too. I've been in construction, residential construction for 20 years now, and we want to talk about the tax base and raising money. There's no better way to raise money than keep construction boosted. You can go to any town. I sell building materials right now in Warner Robins every day, and it's amazing the economic difference between Houston County and Lawrence County. I know they got an Air Force base and we don't, but there's a lot of people from Lawrence County drive up there. If we could market ourselves right, we could have some of the robust housing here that's up there for the fact that our property taxes are so low. But the more houses that are built, the more people we can get in our community, the more your property tax base is going to grow, and the more stuff we'll be able to continue to fund. The more businesses will be developed, more people are going to eat at your restaurants, and the tax money is going to flow in from the property side and the SPOLOs side. And I've worked in multiple markets across the state among multiple people. I don't have an economics degree from UGA, but I know how to make money, and I know how money works, and I know how to get it here.
Okay, thank you. You gentlemen have two minutes each for your closing statement. I'll start with you, Mr. Mathis.
Wow, that was fast. Well, I didn't realize 30 minutes had already passed. But again, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. It's an honor for me just to sit up here and debate Mr. Jeff, and I do appreciate the work he's doing. And if I'm elected, I promise you, I will always work with the best interest in mind, not just for me, not just for District three, but for the county as a whole, all right? Because if we don't all work together to accomplish the same goals, none of us will be successful, okay? I, you know, just from reading commissioners' minutes, meetings, and talking to people that come to meetings, I can tell you that there's some dissension on this commissioners' board. It's evident, okay? I promise you, if you'll vote for me for commissioner of District three, I will work to bring this board back together. And a unified board and a unified county will make for much success in the future. I thank you again tonight for coming. Please vote May 21st for Jared Mathis for District three commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Heath. Just have a lot of gratitude. Thanks again, everybody, for coming out, for watching, for getting informed on the issues. It's important. Thank you, James and Ron Deal and TV 35 for all the coverage y'all give and for, you know, helping everybody get the word out and let folks know what they stand for. Thank you, Mr. Mathis, for being here and sharing your ideas. Thanks again to my wife, Jennifer, and just thanks. I'm grateful, too, to the voters of District three for allowing me the great honor of serving you these years. This time of unprecedented prosperity is something we should all be proud of. We have a proven formula for success. I've been a part of it. I'm experienced, proven and conservative, and I'm willing to continue. I can look you in the eye and tell you straight from my heart that I've served you well and honorably. I'm excited about the future, and I would love to have the honor of your vote. So please vote for me for District three commissioner. Thank you for coming out. God bless you. Good night.